Okay, yes, we're ready. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the order or call us back to open session from closed session. Mr. Gina, if you would report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the Successor Agency met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda. Regarding item 5.1.1, an update was provided and direction was given. Regarding items 5.1.2 through 5.1.7, or I'm sorry, 5.1.8, an update was provided. Regarding item 5.2.1, on a motion by Mayor Pats, seconded by Councilmember Donahue on a 4-1 vote, the City Council authorized initiation of litigation. Regarding item 5.3, all items, an update was provided. Regarding item 5.4, an update was provided. And regarding all items in Section 6.1, an update was provided. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
All right, I believe that ends our closed session meeting. So it is 7:05. We'll call this meeting adjourned. And we'll see you back in 10 minutes.
Roll call for this meeting, and also you can read your statement, and then that'll cover us for the remainder of the evening, I believe.
Great. I'll go ahead and read my statement, then. All right. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference. Pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided under the Governor's executive order in response to COVID-19 state of emergency. During the health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states the public may view this meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27. And may provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will be then read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agenda and Videos. Once there, you'll see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting by using the Raise Your Hand feature, which is visible on your screen, or if you're calling in by pressing *9. The Zoom-in call information was provided on the posted agenda and as well via e-notification. Okay, go ahead and do roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Pats.
Okay. Apologies, I am away from my home office. All right, do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay. Any ex parte communications on our agenda item? Seeing none, I will go right to public comments. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for by the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen or by pressing *9. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been submitted.
They have not. Thank you.
Okay, so that ends the public comments. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I will second it. And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay, and with that, it's 7:16. I will adjourn this meeting. That brings us to the Community Development Commission of Emeryville. I'll call that meeting to order at 7:16. And we can skip roll call and go right to approval of final agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Member Medina, a second for Vice Mayor Martinez. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay. That brings us to any ex parte communications? Seeing none, do I have a motion for the public comments? Any public comment cards?
There are none.
Okay, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I move approval.
Oh, second.
Okay, with a second from Member Medina, first by Member Donahue. Vote, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay, that brings us to the end of that meeting. It is 7:18, which brings us to the Mesa Agenda. Again, we can skip roll call and go right into approval of the final agenda. Have a motion?
I move.
I'll move approved. I'll move, and I'll go ahead and second. Member Medina moves the final agenda. I second it. Vote, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, and so that brings us to public comments, I believe. Any public comment on this agenda?
Did you want to do ex parte communications?
Sure, we can do ex parte and then public comment. Any ex parte communications? Seeing none, public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna move the consent calendar. Do I get a second?
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second, and before we take the vote, I believe the city attorney's contract is within the section of the consent calendar. Am I correct on that, Mr. Gina? And so I want to just take a moment and thank him for his service. I want to commend him for the work that he does for the city, and I just want to say the contract is a reflection of his understanding where we are as a city and really appreciate the hard work that he does. I didn't want to let that go without comment, and I think I speak for the whole council when I say that. But if not, they can chime in now, but I put them awkwardly on the spot. And with that, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay, and we have no action items. I'll adjourn that meeting at 7:20, which brings us to the regular scheduled meeting. That was quick, everybody. Thank you for your patience with that. I will call to order at 7:20 on July 7th. The City Council regularly met scheduled meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can we do the redevelopment agency?
Successor Agency.
Oh, is that MS one? Management, oh, sorry, let's do the redevelopment. I was too excited that we were done. All right, I'm sorry. I apologize. That was a test. Call it to order the redevelopment agency at 7:20. There is no need for a roll call. That brings us to approval of final agenda.
I move approval.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the final agenda. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay. Any ex parte communications on this agenda? Great, seeing none, we'll move right into public comment. Any public comment on this agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, do I, I will go ahead and move the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina. Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay. And there are no action items, so I will call that meeting adjourned at 7:22. I will catch my breath and call to order now correctly the regular City Council meeting. Wait me one second here while I get caught up. All right. So roll call, we can skip. Approval of final agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move final agenda.
Oh, second.
Okay, I have a motion from Member Donahue and Member Medina, seconded.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay, that brings us to special orders today. We have none. There are no announcements or commission vacancies, and so any special announcements or reports on meetings attended from the council? Member Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you. Give me just one second. I need to pull up the agenda. I was able to attend the Alameda County Board of Supervisors Public Protection Committee Special Meeting on Wednesday, July 1st, and I asked for a future agenda item to address diversity and recruitment for Alameda County Fire. Mayor Lily May from Fremont also made a request to address training when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion with the current staff, so just wanted to inform council of that.
Thank you. Member Medina?
Yeah, I attended a A-BAG informational meeting. I guess there wasn't a quorum, but it was a webinar on the new arena goals, and it was very heavily attended primarily by members of the community who were not happy with the new arena numbers. We were not able as a body to give any kind of discussion. We were not invited to do so. I was able to ask why the arena numbers were significantly lower than it was projected earlier this year. And just for reference, if you haven't seen them, they're about double what it was last time, or it was projected to be at least triple.
Okay, thank you. Any other meetings attended? Special announcements? Okay, seeing none, we will move along. City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is continuing to work remotely for the most part, obviously with the exception of the Police Department, the Fire Department, and also our members of our Community Services Department who are operating the Early Childhood Development, Emeryville Childhood Development Center, and also summer camps. And we have an enrollment, I think it's close to 50 for summer camps, and trying to increase our enrollment at ECDC as well to help families out. So just really grateful for those staff who are working so hard. In addition, with regard to some programs that the council recently adopted, renter assistance, as you know, we extended the application timeline for July renter assistance. I don't have an update on the number of households that were assisted, but because we had additional funds, we hadn't used up the funds that we had anticipated to use up for June, we were able to help more households in July, hopefully, applications. And we have also been pushing out the local business recovery grants, the $4,000 grants that the council authorized to help out the businesses that needed to replace some of their property or their inventory as a result of the unrest at the end of May. And also processing temporary use permits for outdoor dining. There have, as a couple of council members have brought to our attention, hasn't been as fast as some people have wanted. We have been trying to do that in a really coordinated fashion with staff and trying to get those approved as quickly as possible so that folks can set up the outdoor dining. So all of those are underway, and we're very grateful for the council's leadership on those new programs. That's all I've got.
Great, thank you. All right, any ex parte communications on items on the agenda this evening? Member Medina?
On item 12.3, I've spoken with elected officials from both Berkeley and Oakland and staff, from Mayor Arghen's office, I believe Councilmember Harrison's office, Board President Kaplan's office, about that item.
Thank you. Mr. Bowers?
I have the same disclosures to make as Councilmember Medina on item 12.3.
Excellent. All right, any other ex parte? All right, that brings us to public comments. This is your chance to comment on items on the agenda or not listed on the agenda, sorry, in the consent part of the agenda or not on our agenda, and you can raise your hand in Zoom or press *9. I will now ask the clerk if anyone has done that.
I've received no online comment cards, and I see no raised hands.
All right, I'm gonna breathe in, and then I will take a motion for the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Martinez.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay, great. We have no public hearings this evening. That brings us to action items. Our first action item is 12.1, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I believe 12.1.1, we have a presentation, or...
Yes, and I can report briefly on this to you, Mayor and council. As you're aware, at your last meeting, you received a report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee making several recommendations, one of which you asked for us to bring forward for action at this meeting, and that's what this item is. It's simply to revise the composition of the body to allow that currently there are two business representatives in the composition, and we want to make those also open to residents. So there would be a total of nine members. Seven are residents or community members, and then two could be business or residents. So that is the action you would take on that. And then sort of coupled with that, we did appointments to all of our committees' last meeting, but we ended up with, because we hadn't been able to make this change yet, we ended up with one seat that was applied for as a resident, but that this change could make it open to one of the applicants. And we did have... Hello?
Did we lose her?
Yeah, can you hear me?
You just cut out.
Okay, I beg your pardon. I'm back. Anyway, we did have one applicant for that remaining open vacancy, and that was Tom Modick, and I see that he is on the meeting tonight if council wanted to talk to him. So the actions requested would be the resolution to amend the membership composition, and the second action would be if council chose to make an appointment tonight.
Okay, I think it's important that we make the amendment first, because I think it'd be rude if we said yes and then didn't do that. So let's go ahead and, any clarifying questions before I open up to public comments? No? Okay, any public comment on this item?
No, we don't have any.
Member Medina, I'm gonna go to you to... Sorry, I realized you have cat.
Oh, it's okay. He just busted through the window. He's been great. So, yeah, I was able to fortunately speak about this again with BPAC last night. It's great timing there and updated them that we put this on the agenda. They were really happy to hear this as they would like to have a full committee, and this will better help them do so. So I would strongly support this changed committee composition, and I'll make that motion.
Great.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments from council members before I call for the vote? Seeing none, let's go ahead and go right to the vote.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye, okay. For the next item, did we receive any public comments?
No public comment.
Okay, Member Medina, I'm gonna go, this is the appointment for that seat. I'm gonna go to you.
Yeah, are we sure that Tom Modick does not want to speak?
No, I haven't, I haven't asked him.
Oh, you've got his hand raised. He does.
Oh, I was gonna say, we could do the appointment and then have him speak then, or we could have him talk first, but it sounds like you wanted to talk first. So, Mr. Modick, you've got the floor.
Am I on?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, well, it was kind of strange last night to not be on the bike committee for like the first time in, I don't know, 17 or 18 years. And I almost thought for a while there, gosh, I could continue like this. But then I started thinking about the bicycle, the interchange at Ashby and our bike boulevards and things like that, and I want to keep going on this. I think that what I could say about the bike committee over all these years is that we've got the will, and now I think we've got to do a little more way, like as in infrastructure. That's my thought, and slow traffic down. And I've loved being on the committee, and to actually miss a meeting like that was really strange. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I will say thank you for your service, and I think a one-day break or one-meeting break is long enough for 18 years. I'll come back to, Member Medina?
Yes, I want to say thank you so much for reapplying, Tom. The appointments last time were not at all meant as a slight, just as an opportunity to get new people engaged as we reshuffled the organizational structure, and thank you for being so gracious about it. I mean, last night was three and a half hours, so I'm just trying to calculate in my head what 17 years of service would be in terms of total... years of service would be in terms of total BPAC hours, and it's kind of staggering. So yes, I'll move to appoint you for so many more hours of that.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments before I go to the vote? Seeing none, go ahead and take the vote, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye, and thank you for your service, Tom.
And Mayor Pats?
I'm gonna say, I and Mr. Modic, I'm gonna tell you it's time to get back to work. You've had enough of a break.
I hear you.
Thank you much. All right, let me go back to my agenda. That brings us to 12.2, the scope of work. Is Mr. Bryant presenting, or Ms. Keenan?
We have Ms. Keena presenting tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Is she on the phone?
Yes, I am here.
Diana, let me know when you want me to bring up your PowerPoint.
Uh, just right now.
Okay. Oops. Sorry about that. Let me get it to the first slide.
We're gonna sneak preview of the whole thing.
I know, déjà vu.
Okay. Good evening, council members. This item is about the draft scope of work for pedestrian and bicycle plan, which might end up being called the Active Transportation Plan as recommended by the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. The state requires updating bicycle plans every 10 years in order to get funding to build infrastructure. The current plan was adopted in May of 2012, so the next plan has to be adopted by May of 2022. Next slide, please. This draft scope of work is based on the Alameda County Transportation Commission's Local Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Guidelines, and the scope of work for the 2012 plan, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee's wish list from 2017, and some summary of their minutes from a couple of years from that, and comments on this draft scope of work from the BPAC and the Planning Commission, which is in pink because they happened after your staff report. Next slide, please. The BPAC wanted to make sure that the consultants refer to the design guidelines, and that we have a quick build option for future projects when problems or opportunities arise. These might be projects weren't exactly defined in the plan. How can we build them quickly without taking several months to amend the plan? So that'll be interesting to see what they come up with. Connected bicycle and pedestrian networks, access to transit, sense of safety in inviting bikeways and walkways, making curb areas inviting spaces, shared mobility including bicycles and scooters, pedestrian amenities including restrooms and water fountains, which I just noticed were in the general plan, wayfinding using color paint on pavement. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission had many comments. They suggested that we do outreach in parks and housing complexes, that we include lessons learned from the 2012 plan, and we include micro mobility including electric bikes and scooters, address safe routes to parks, emulate great bike cities like Amsterdam, Copenhagen, Portland, and Boulder. Consider second access to peninsula such as through a tunnel. Consider LED lighting on pedestrian bridges. Secure bike parting, parking for, such as moviegoers. This is kind of bringing up a medium-term parking idea. Free parking for residents of housing complexes. Wayfinding signs with trips on, with trip times on them, and a broader title that includes electric bikes and scooters. I don't know if there's something below that or not. Next, next slide. Okay. The introduction will ask the consultants to provide a planning process with many groups participating, and pedestrian and bicycle networks and programs for all ages and abilities, addressing micro mobility including e-bikes and scooters. Now, these pink things from the Planning Commission are not in the draft that went to you in the packet, but we did send you an email just a few minutes ago that has that in red line. We want then consultants to address bike parking, wayfinding, safe routes to schools and parks, transit access, maintenance, and the needs of the disadvantaged and underserved people. We also wanted to have a strategy for Emeryville to become a premier bicycle pedestrian city. Next slide, please. We want them to address many groups in the outreach process: disadvantaged and underserved, seniors, families with children, people with disabilities, park users, residents, workers, employers, property owners and managers, transit riders, walkers, and cyclists, transit providers, TNCs, delivery companies, schools, adjacent cities, transportation agencies, air quality agencies, BPAC, Community Commission on Aging, Public Works, Transportation Committee, Planning Commission, and City Council. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, that looks better. The outreach activities should include some outreach in the parks and residential complexes, publicity including postcards, flyers, web page, social media, whatever else they can think of, and stakeholder interviews, focus groups, attending meetings of existing groups online, and we hope they can do intercept surveys, attending community events, meetings in the neighborhoods, committee meetings and study sessions, and public hearings. So the first two rounds will have all of this, and then the adoption round will just have the committee meetings and public hearings. Next slide, please. So we would like the consultants to review a bunch of existing documents. The pedestrian and bicycle plan and its status update from 2017, the general plan and the most recent annual progress report on implementing it, the capital improvement program, the age-friendly initiatives, community concerns about transportation, the design guidelines, the most recent major development project list so they can see what's coming down the pike, the Powell Street pedestrian study, the bicycle parking section of the planning regulations because we want them to come up with some general policies for overhauling that, the 40th and San Pablo Bus Hub Project concept design, and a bunch of documents from Berkeley, Oakland, the county, the region, and Caltrans. Next slide, please. The existing report, conditions report will include many things: data on collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and they can refer to the Alameda County Transportation Commission's high injury networks for both of those pedestrians and bicycles. Uses existing and proposed and centers, job centers, other kinds of centers, transit facilities, transit hubs, transit stops, transit amenities, pedestrian facilities, sidewalks, crossings, bull belts, paths, bicycle facilities, all the different kinds of linear ones, plus traffic calming and bike parking, and the conditions of the facilities. What state of repair are they in? Do they have pinch points? Do we need to do something to the crossings? And signs for bikeways, paths, wayfinding, traffic, and where there's no bikes allowed on the pit path. Barriers, we know barriers on the freeway and railroad tracks. We want to think in terms of how people get to transit nearby cities and regional trails. Disadvantaged and underserved areas in and near the city. Traffic counts, pedestrians, bicycles, autos, and programs for safety, education, encouragement, enforcement, and maintenance. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission added that we should take a lesson, look at lessons learned from implementation of the 2012 plan. Why did some of the, were some of the aspects of the plan difficult to implement, such as traffic volume limits on bicycle boulevards and unbuilt capital projects? Next slide, please. The recommended network should accommodate family bikes and slower walkers, comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, show facility locations, routes, types, and classes, and include guidelines, not designs, but guidelines for sidewalk elements, crossings, traffic calming, signs, bull belts, and refuge islands, and refer to other existing guidelines for wayfinding, geometry, striping, and traffic control. So we're consistent with the rest of the world. It should address BPAC requests, the wish list, the minutes, and discussions during the process, not necessarily by doing exactly what BPAC has recommended, but maybe by addressing the underlying desires and coming up with a better way to address them. And next slide, please. Recommended networks should include pedestrian facilities, sidewalks, relocations of things that are in the way on the sidewalks, maybe crosswalks, signal changes, ramps, curbs, extensions, refuge islands, pedestrian bridge lighting, new paths and path improvements. Bicycle facilities, bike lanes, protected bike lanes, bike boulevards, bike paths, traffic calming, bike racks, and lockers for medium and long-term parking. That's that new planning commission idea. Signs, wayfinding with trip times, interesting idea, bike boulevards, paths, traffic warnings, and no bikes on the pit only paths. And ways to overcome barriers and closed gaps, including multiple routes across major barriers. That's how I put in the part about another way to get to the peninsula. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, thank you. So we're asking the consultants to develop policies and programs, bike parking requirements for new developments and public locations, including free parking for residents. If you live in a condo or apartment complex, you shouldn't have to rent your bike parking space. Secure parking for stays of more than an hour, long enough to go to the movies. Safety, education, encouragement, enforcement, and maintenance programs, very important. Safe routes to school program, we don't have one right now, and how in the future to deal with data collection and reporting, counts collisions and injuries. And a public participation process for the detailed project design of things that are in the plan, but they're not detailed, defined. And that process should include how to get the disadvantaged and underserved people involved. Next slide, please. And then for costs and priorities, we would like them to develop a capital projects list with the locations, capital costs, maintenance costs, and staff time to manage the project for all capital projects, and lead a process to prioritize those, knowing all that. And then a program list with the cost, staff time to set it up and manage it, and lead a process to set up program priorities. Next slide, please. For implementation and funding, we want the consultants to develop timelines for projects and programs, and Public Works will have a strong input to that. We want it to be realistic, and recommended funding sources and strategies. And we did this in 2012, and we were glad we did, prepare three grant applications for capital projects. Next slide, please. So the deliverables will start with some memos, an outreach strategy, existing conditions, and then first round outreach results. So the first round will be, here's the existing conditions. What have you already been thinking you would like to have? What are the desires and needs? And then pedestrian and bicycle networks, policies and programs, the list of them with costs and priorities, funding sources and strategies, and second round outreach results. And that's where we say, here's our draft plan, what do you think? And then we bring the draft and final plan to the committees, the commission, and the council, commissions, there's two. And then we take those comments and make the final plan. Next slide, please. So that completes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, any council member questions? Member Medina?
Yeah, thank you. And sorry, I don't, I didn't catch the original slide. It was a large volume of information going on there. But earlier in the presentation, you put free parking for residents of complexes, which caught my attention because I think it was under the BPAC section, and just does not sound like something BPAC would have recommended, and I certainly don't recall them doing so. Then later on, I think closer to slide like 12 or 13, you mentioned bike parking, and then a sub-bullet about free parking. To clarify, are any of the recommendations about free vehicular parking, or is it specifically for free bike parking?
Bike parking, of course.
We gotta, we gotta put it on.
I just want to make sure I say that.
Okay. Yeah, it just doesn't feel like a BPAC thing to say free parking.
Any other clarifying questions? All right, are there any public comments on this?
Yes, we have two raised hands. The first one is last four digits, 1281. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Nowhere in this list of asks for the, I guess for the consultant, nowhere in there is something that's critically needed, and that is an analysis as to what went wrong with the first bike pit plan, the one from 2012, I should say. You know, so we don't repeat the same mistakes with the new plan that we did with the 2012 plan. There should be an analysis. The consultant should figure out what didn't work and why. And then so that, like I said, so we can avoid those mistakes for the future plan. Like, for instance, we know that bike, the bicycle pedestrian, I'm sorry, the bike boulevard network is not possible to build out in Emeryville. We can't get past level three traffic calming. It just can't happen. Before, we couldn't even get the traffic counts required by the plan every two years until the Emeryville Tattler did a story on it, and then shamed the council, I guess, and then they decided to go ahead and do the traffic counts. However, even the Emeryville Tattler, as powerful as it is, is not powerful enough to force the powers that be at Emeryville City Hall to deliver level four, or even, of course, not got level five traffic calming as the plan dictates. So the Emeryville Tattler can't be relied upon, so that means that we can't get the plan implemented. So then, so the, we should fix this problem for the next bicycle pedestrian plan because it's ridiculous. We should be able to do what we want to do. We shouldn't have City Hall stop for whatever reason. There should be an analysis. Now, and then I wanted to say as an aside, you'll notice this criticism that I'm offering right now, there, this point I'm saying that should be brought to the consultants, is effectively a criticism. What I'm criticizing specifically is I'm criticizing the work product of the BPAC. They didn't think of this, and they should have. They should have thought that we need to put, you know, have what I'm suggesting, which is, you know, a rehash of what didn't work on the first, on the 2012 plan. So they didn't do it, they should have. So it's essentially what I'm saying, is I'm criticizing the BPAC. So that is a bridge too far for Councilwoman Ally Medina. She says that anybody that criticizes any committee in Emeryville is, that's a deeply offensive thing to do. She said this publicly, especially the BPAC, that's her committee, she's the liaison for the BPAC. So I am now saying that the BPAC made a mistake, and that is a criticism of the BPAC. So all of the, this comment I've been making is deeply offensive according to Ally Medina. So I'm saying this at the risk of being called out for being deeply offensive. Thank you.
A.
Okay, and we have a second speaker, Fran Quittell. Fran, I'm allowing you to talk now, and you need to unmute.
I unmuted myself. Hi, how are you?
Great, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just have a couple of questions about the types of vehicles, and I have four additional vehicles that might be appropriate for the bike lane. One is, one might be preposterous, but it's just a thought. Golf carts. So somebody who wasn't driving their car anymore, but they had a golf cart. Is that included? Handicapped scooters, bikes with child carts or wagons. So if you were riding your bike, but you had a little wagon for your children. And then handicapped scooters, meaning a scooter for somebody who had a broken bone. They were recovering from a broken ankle or leg, and they were riding around town on a scooter. So could the list of possible vehicles for these lanes be amplified or maybe not restricted to the ones that you have so far? In other words, if something is appropriate for that lane, could it be considered or grandfathered in? And if it's not appropriate, can it be excluded? Just a thought.
Thank you. Was that our final comment?
Yeah, that's it. I'm gonna mute myself now.
Thank you, and there are no other comments. Mayor Pats?
Thank you. Okay, I will go to discussion on this item. Member Medina, would you like to speak first?
Sure. Actually, I believe analysis was one of the factors on the slides, but it didn't make it into deliverables. And I would support that being included in the deliverables, is the analysis of the efficacy of the last bike plan. We're going in two-time period is the analysis of the efficacy of the last bike plan. We're going in two-time period of even more limited budget, and so being able to figure out what works for us, and being able to perform for our city is going to be more important than ever.
Any other comments? Okay.
Member Batter, has a comment?
Sorry, I jumped off the screen. Go ahead, Member Batter.
No golf carts in bike lanes.
Yeah, there's lots and lots of rules around golf carts, and having to have them licensed, and they end up being cars if they're allowed on public streets. Okay, so, again, this is just informational item, and so that brings us to 12.3, and that is the ballot measure. City manager or city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be leading the discussion on this, but the city manager may be jumping in as well, as needed. So I'll ask Sheri to pull up the PowerPoint, please. All right. So good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the Transportation Network Company user tax for the November 3, 2020 ballot. What's under consideration is a tax on users of TNCs for rides which originate in Emeryville. Next slide, please. So first, we'll start with some background, starting with what is a transportation network company, or a TNC. A TNC is a platform that provides for pre-arranged transportation services using an online app, usually your smartphone, to connect drivers with passengers. Passengers can arrange for either a private ride, a private trip, or a pool trip. A private trip is where one or more passengers are transported for a single fare, whereas a pool trip is where multiple passengers are transported in the same vehicle, but there are separate fares that are charged for the various passengers. For all types of TNC trips, the fares and tips are charged and collected by the Transportation Network Company through its online app, and the funds are not collected by the driver. The TNC would then distribute that compensation to the driver in a separate transaction. TNC trips in Emeryville use the public streets and roads and contribute to the wear and tear on the public infrastructure. TNC trips also contribute to traffic congestion and air pollution within the city. Currently, TNCs and TNC trips do not pay any taxes to the city to offset their impacts on that infrastructure. The cities of Oakland and Berkeley are considering a tax on, are also considering a tax on TNC trips which originate in their cities. At your June 16 meeting, the council directed staff to prepare a tax measure, which would be substantially similar to the Oakland and Berkeley measures. And so this presentation and the materials in your staff report respond to the direction from council. It's our understanding that Berkeley and Oakland will be taking the TNC measures to their respective councils on July 14. So in order to best align the Emeryville version of the measure to those of Oakland and Berkeley, we are recommending that you consider the measure and give us direction tonight, but that not take any action, and instead that you continue this, if you want to continue pursuing the measure, to continue this item for action to your July 21 meeting. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the measure itself. If adopted, the tax measure would impose a tax on users of trips that originate in the city of Emeryville. The tax rate would be 50 cents per private trip and 25 cents per pool trip. The trip would be collected by the platform along with the fare and any other tips, and then remitted to the city on a monthly basis. As currently written, the tax is set up as a general tax, meaning that would only require a majority vote in order to pass. And as a general tax, the proceeds would go to fund general municipal services. If adopted by the voters, the measure would become effective on January 1, 2021, and would continue until repealed by voters. Next slide, please. This slide is the proposed ballot question. I'm not going to read it for you. If the council were to continue pursuit of this item, the staff would ask for your feedback on the ballot question. You'll also see that there is a blank for what the estimated tax revenue would be. At the time that we prepared and published the staff report, staff was still doing its research as to how much we would, what the tax would be estimated to generate on an annual basis. We've completed our research, and staff estimates that the measure, if adopted, would generate between 76,000 and 134,000 per year. If the council were to continue this item to your July 21 meeting, staff would provide a full analysis of that fiscal analysis in the staff report for that July 21 meeting. Next slide, please. So the resolution that's attached to the staff report, in addition to submitting the ordinance to the voters, also authorizes certain actions which are bulleted here. It would consolidate the municipal election with the statewide general election. It would have the city attorney prepare an impartial analysis of the tax measure, and authorize the city council to author a single ballot argument in favor of the measure, and then it also authorizes filing of rebuttal arguments. Next slide, please. So the recommendation is that you provide direction to staff tonight. If you wish to continue consideration of this item, then we appreciate feedback on the ballot question and the tax measure. And again, if you were to continue, if you were to pursue this item, that you not take any action tonight, and instead continue this item to the July 21 meeting. And that's the conclusion of my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Clarifying questions? Member Medina.
To clarify, Mr. Medina, my understanding is that Berkeley is having a discussion like ours on July 14. Oakland has had this discussion at Rules Committee this afternoon, and unanimously recommended to go to council on July 21. And Berkeley's plan is to also hear this item on July 21 for a vote. Is that correct?
That's.
That all cities would be voting on July 21?
That's my, that's my understanding.
Okay.
So just to confirm, Mr. Medina, I think earlier you said that Oakland had placed the measure on its July 14 meeting.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So my understanding is that Oakland is going to their council on July 14. But if you have other information, then.
My understanding is that Berkeley, Berkeley and Oakland are both planning on going to council on the 21st.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Other clarifying questions? Member Donahue.
What about, say, regular taxis, say originating at MacArthur Park and driving into Emeryville? Would they be paying this tax?
No, this tax does not apply to taxis. It only applies to TNCs such as Uber and Lyft.
Does the tax apply where the ride is initiated, or where it's concluded?
Where it's initiated.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to know about how the ballot question was developed. Do the other cities have the same language? And if so, I just want to know where it came from.
Yeah, so this is based on the language from Oakland and Berkeley. And again, we're trying to align as closely as possible to theirs, but the basis for what is in your staff report tonight is based on the Oakland and Berkeley language.
Is it any different?
There is some slight, there is some slight wording that is, it's substantively the same.
Any other clarifying questions before I go to public comments? Okay. Lee Clark, is there any public comments on this item?
Yes, I have one raised hand, last four numbers, 1281. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm concerned that Councilwoman Medina might say something deeply offensive, criticizing the staff when you guys start discussing this. You know, it's beyond the pale to have deeply offensive comments at Emeryville City Hall. And so I'm worried that she's going to do it, because she just did moments ago, make a deeply offensive comment, because she said that she thought that the B-PAC perhaps should have included analysis of the previous bike plans failures moving forward for the new bike plan. That is a criticism of the B-PAC. She criticized their work, and that's deeply offensive. We know that is, because she tells us that is. So I'm concerned that she's going to be deeply offended, or make some deeply offensive comments regarding the staff's work product on this topic. And so my delicate ears will be assaulted if I hear any deeply offensive comments coming from Councilmember Medina, or of course, anybody else. So, I mean, the councilwoman has been like, just like entirely too free in her speech, and she's just going on with total disregard to the public who might be deeply offended. And so that, she should be admonished by the four of you for the deeply offensive comments you made when she criticized the B-PAC just moments ago. If you move forward to admonish her, then perhaps she won't make deeply offensive comments against the staff on this item. So I think it sort of behooves you to censor, or like at least admonish in some capacity, your colleague, Councilwoman Medina. We don't want to hear the deeply offensive comments, so it sort of behooves you guys to do that. Thank you very much.
Actually, we have another hand raised?
Yes, Fran Quittell.
I'm unmuting myself. So one thing is that it doesn't include taxis, that I find a little difficult. The second thing is, what's the negative impact of this? I'm just asking and the thinking, I don't, and the third thing is, I believe the city attorney said there were differences in the way the bills were worded in different cities. Can you point to what those differences are? I'd like to hear them. I'm going to mute myself now.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? None. I will go to discussion. Member Medina.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the staff for their very quick and efficient work on this, and the council for their consideration of this item. Councilmember Batter and I have been meeting with our colleagues in Oakland and Berkeley for, I believe, over a year now about this ballot measure potential. We have requested trip data from the CPUC, and that request has been denied. We've not been able to access that information. And so I'd ask the council to support me in continuing the side of the 21st, so we continue to refine estimates and work with our fellow cities to create a substantially conformance language. And then at that time, we can discuss any differences in language, and what information we've done between now and the 21st.
Member Batter?
I would concur with Member Medina that more analysis needs to be done on the fiscal, and if she makes a motion, I would be happy to second, to continue.
Okay, so I think we have, I'm going to go to Member Donahue and Vice Mayor Martinez. Otherwise, I think we have consensus to continue this to the 21st. Nod. I don't think we need to do a formal vote to continue it, do we? No. So I think we'll just continue this to the 21st. Thank you guys for your work on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Just one note, I think the city attorney mentioned this earlier, but I just want to, if you are continuing, the item is written, I just want you also to know that we'll be providing the fiscal analysis as a supplemental report, so that when your agenda packet publishes for the 21st, you'll not only have the report that you received tonight, but also the fiscal analysis that the city attorney described verbally this evening. So we were able to get that done for this meeting, but we will have it for the 21st.
Yeah. And just to address Fran's two questions, taxes are excluded because there's a whole bunch of laws around that that is separate, and we don't want to get into that. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then, secondly, I think that fiscal piece will help us with the, with answering the other part, which was the challenges of doing this. So thank you. All right, let me pull up my agenda here. That's the end of 12.3. That brings us to department head reports.
Mr. Mayor, we have a report from Charlie Bryant. There he is.
Hey there. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pats and members of the city council, this is my monthly report to you on the Planning Commission's most recent meeting, which was on June 25, about a week and a half ago. I would note that the appeal deadline for that meeting is this coming Friday, July 10, although all of the items that were on the agenda will be coming to the city council eventually anyway, so there's no need to appeal any of them. The first item was a public hearing on the 47th Street Homes Project, which involves the demolition of four existing houses and their replacement with three new duplexes for a total of six new units. After a lengthy public hearing and commission deliberations, they took a vote to, they passed a motion, they did not pass a resolution, they passed a motion to recommend that the city council deny this application, and they articulated some findings for that. The vote on that was, I should also note that Commissioner Sohanay had an excused absence at June 25 meeting, so there were six commissioners that were present. The vote on that was four ayes, zero noes, and two abstained, with Commissioner Sohanay absent. The four ayes were Commissioners Donaldson, Mendez, Young, and Chair Guerrero, and the two abstentions were Commissioners Keller and Thompson. That item is now scheduled for public hearing at your September 15 meeting. I believe that it had previously been scheduled for September 1, but it has now been rescheduled for the September 15 city council meeting. The second item on the commission's agenda was the cannabis regulation amendments, which you had earlier directed us to prepare. And the commission held a public hearing on those, and they approved those unanimously, six to nothing. They approved a recommendation that the city council adopt those amendments, and we have that scheduled for public hearing at your September 1 meeting. And then finally, the commission reviewed the pedestrian and bicycle plan scope of work, and I don't have to go through all the commissioners' comments on that, because Diana just did that for you. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Do we have any clarifying questions? Other than, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Any other department head reports this evening?
We have none. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pats, I see there's a raised hand. So I'm assuming a public comment is asking to be made?
Do we take public comment on department head reports, Mr. Medina? You're muted.
Sorry, I would recommend that you do allow public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the public comment.
Oops, got to use the right mouse. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, it should be known that the Planning Commission, when they discussed the 47th Street Homes proposal, were critical of the staff presentation. They made some comments that were, could be considered as being critical. And so, you know, as we now know in Emeryville, that that is deeply offensive. And so, you know, as we now know in Emeryville, that that is deeply offensive. If anybody offers criticism of, presumably of any kind, but definitely of like the staff or even more so of any, any citizens committees, that's off limits in Emeryville. So I think, again, you should move to admonish the planning commission for, for deeply offensive comments that they made against the staff presentation. You just missed your chance to do it, to admonish your Councilwoman Medina for making deeply offensive comments against BPAC. So, you know, I think you should correct that, make a correction and do that now. It's, I mean, it's just reckless for her to be making such deeply offensive comments saying that the BPAC is doing, is doing anything other than a stellar job. These people give their, you know, volunteer their free time for the city of Emeryville and selflessly they offer their, their services for no money, for no compensation. And to have Councilwoman Medina, you know, being so, you know, slamming them down like she did, it's just, you know, it's deeply offensive and I think you guys should take a stand on that. I mean, do you really want your committee members or indeed your staff to be faced with this level of unacceptable criticism? So I'll take, I'll take my, the comments you have about this off the air and you can mute me now, please.
Please do. Okay, and I see no other public comments at this time. And Mayor, you are muted.
Muted, okay. All right, that brings us to future agenda items. Do we have any other future agenda items at this time? Member Martinez, Vice Mayor Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that our eviction ordinances have lapsed on June 30th and I saw in one of our updates from Townsend that the governor has issued an executive order that would allow cities to extend their moratoria until September 30th. So I'd like to put that on the next, soonest agenda.
Great, thank you. Report all around? Okay. Other future agenda items? Okay, I want to take this opportunity to remind people that we talked last time about having a study session on EPD. And so just to make sure that we have everything captured, we have finally got a date and time, July 21st from 3 to 5. And things that are on the list for, for us to agendize are their use of force policy, which included annual reporting and trainings and summary of qualifications and education, a discussion on less than lethal weapons, which included both the rules and regulations, but also our current inventory. And then talk on staff turnover, history of complaints. I'm also going to bring up a topic of citizen oversight and talking about that as well. But I wanted to make sure that I've captured everything people wanted to talk about and give an opportunity for fellow council members to add anything to the agenda that I might have missed. Go ahead, Member Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate you outlining what you have planned for that agenda. I have two items in light of that that I'd like to add if the council supports. The first is I, I don't know if it folds into an existing item, but I would like to review the practice of posting mugshots for people who are not wanted or registered sexual offenders. I think there's a tendency to post pictures of people who have been arrested and an arrest is not indicative of the commission of a crime. And so I would like to review the practice of publicly releasing mugshots. That's the first item. And my second item is I did a review of the entire Emeryville Municipal Code for the use of the term misdemeanor. I think one of the things that the cities should be doing right now is we talk about interactions between police and civilians and the basis for action between police and civilians is because there's a basis to arrest somebody. Most of the times that the term misdemeanor is used in Emeryville Municipal Code, it's actually duplicative of a use in a state statute. There are state statutes that govern these issues. There's state penal code sections that cover the issues. And we've had several instances that I've been outspoken about at the council, removing it from being a misdemeanor for not picking up dog poop in the city. When we refined a park ordinance, I asked to have that stricken. Similarly, sleeping in vehicles, this council has been very good about it and the term misdemeanor appears 24 times in the entire municipal code. About six of them are just citation to the word misdemeanor as a title or other purpose, but there's about a dozen or so uses of a misdemeanor offense under Emeryville Municipal Code. And I would like to see us decriminalize our code and discuss those sections and whether or not those cannot be infractions. And we could either have, we could create a secondary level of infraction, so infraction one and two. But I just want to have a conversation about whether we need to necessarily have things in our code that are punishable as crimes.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a clarifying question on that?
Please.
So this was, as you teed it up or framed it up, a potential list of things for the two-hour work session on July 21st. I would just like to clarify whether, what Councilmember Bowers is asking for is a research project to be presented on that topic he just outlined in terms of reviewing the municipal code for that meeting? Or would this be a subsequent topic that we would ask the city attorney to do some research into?
I, if the mayor would like this to be separated from the study session on the 21st, I think that's fine. I'm not necessarily proposing a research project. You can hit find on the Emeryville Municipal Code, type the word misdemeanor and it gives you each statute. And I think if those are presented to council, council is educated enough to understand whether they want this to be criminal offenses. But if staff would like more time, I'm happy waiting. My dog agrees with me, I'm happy waiting until September to do that.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to, we can, I don't think there's any challenge in doing this. I'm just, I'm trying to manage the time.
That's fine. I've said September is fine.
We can certainly bring that back in September.
I've, I've said September is fine.
So I have gone ahead and added it to the list for right now and we will sit down and look at that. I think, I think I appreciate that flexibility from Member Bowers to do it. I think it's a, I think in the spirit of that meeting, I think it's a great thing to say, hey, these are, what did you say, 24?
That's the number of times the word is used, but that's not, there's fewer offenses that that covers, but that's the number of times the word appears in the entire code.
But I think it's very much in keeping with the spirit of the study session. And so maybe if we just have as a quick introduction and plant the seed, but not to take action. And I think I want to, I want to say that under the context of, I don't think we can solve all the problems in two hours. I think this is a beginning of the long, of the long game of sort of saying, hey, let's get these things, we're talking about them, we're, we're, we're going to keep working through it. And I'm really big on having a list of action items. So having this introduced there, time permitting and sort of saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to come back to these in September, I think that's a great idea. But again, I don't know how long the list is going to get and how much time we're going to need. Member Medina and then Member Donahue? So Member Medina, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Time permitting on this, being very conscious of the two hours of this meeting, it would be great to just get a quick update about what information is collected on traffic stops and if that information is publicly available in any way.
Thank you, okay. And Member Donahue?
California Senator Skinner has a number of public safety bills coming before the Senate, the California Senate. And it'd just be nice to have a quick review of those bills so we can see what potentially the state legislation could be affecting our public safety departments.
Thank you. Legislative update is always good. And again, I think that might be one of those that if, with your permission, Member Donahue, if we are short on time as we look at the final agenda, which I think we have to publish relatively soon, with your indulgence, that might be something we ask for with one of our regular updates in September.
Well, it could be just even reading what the, the bills are. I think it could inform us and it would take less than three minutes to read what the bills are. I don't know. I think it would, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, we can see if we can ask Nicolo to put a package together and we could just publish that. We may not be able to go into it in any depth, but at least we could make those available to you.
That's a good.
My second thought, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this might be in Nicolo's court as well, but I'm just wondering if we could get a brief update on any changes or updates that are being considered by the post commission regarding standards and training.
We can ask Chief Schreeder to look into that.
Great. Okay. I believe that's it for future agenda items.
Oh, Mayor Patz, excuse me, there is a raised hand again among our attendees.
Yes, I'm sure we said something highly offensive in this planning of our future meeting. Mr. Medina, I'm going to look to you again to see if I'm required to take public comments.
I would recommend that you do, yes.
Interesting.
Go ahead.
Let's go. Let's go ahead and.
Okay, the mayor says, the mayor says interesting to Mr. Medina, the attorney, the attorney's, city attorney's recommendation that free speech be allowed. So I find it interesting that the mayor finds that interesting that free speech should flourish. And on that, speaking to that, I think you should put on the future agenda to placate Councilwoman Medina, you should put a discussion of what is deeply offensive comments that, that the public or that indeed the council might make in future meetings. So you can, so she can offer to all of us, tell her, tell us all like what constitutes deeply offensive comments or deeply offensive speech so that we can, you know, improve it. So I think you should offer Councilwoman Medina, who has been deeply offended by, by comments critical of, for instance, the BPAC, their work, their work product. So I, I think you should give her the chance to, to, you know, to quantify that. And then I wanted to say, hear, hear and thank you to Councilmember Bowers for the, for the two things that he just offered, especially the mugshot idea about the city of Emeryville's putting up mugshots of people that haven't been convicted of a crime. And that is, I find that deeply offensive. I, yeah, it's outrageous actually, and I think that you should, you should stop doing that, only if people have gotten arrested. And if you do it, of course, Rob Arias will just shit, he'll just, his hair will be on fire because he won't be able to put pictures of, you know, perps in his right wing news blog anymore. And that's sort of his bread and butter. But it's, even if you might deeply offend Rob Arias, I think you should do it anyway. So, so thanks to Councilmember Bowers for that and also for the other item that Mr. Bowers talked about, about the trying to decriminalize our code. Hear, hear to that. So two excellent points from Councilmember Bowers. And then again, to placate Councilwoman Medina, I think you should offer a chance to quantify the, what is deeply offensive speech. So those are my two, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
All right, so I think that is the end of future agenda items, although I will comment that I think my mugshot is much more attractive than my Zoom profile, younger and better looking back then. And with that, it is 8:27. We stand adjourned.